Open this meeting at 6:30. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none. The student report, we have Michael Tyrell. He will be a junior, or no, you're a junior now and you'll be a senior next year. All right.
Yeah, this is, this is one of those times where you think there's nothing going on, but there's really a ton in athletics, academics, and in the arts. I mean, I see teachers running around and ministries running around, and I feel like I'm running around at this point of the year. But, so, in athletics, many of our teams have made very deep runs into the playoffs, and they've enjoyed much success. Softball slaughtered, and I found out today that slaughtered is actually a technical term in that sport. They slaughtered Arlington Catholic 12 to 0 yesterday, and that was the D2 North quarterfinals. They need to win two more to win, to become the D2 North champs, and four more to become the D2 champs for the state. Their next game is Wednesday against either Marblehead, who is favored to win D2 North, or Whittier Tech.
An update for you. Whittier Tech beat Marblehead 6-0.
Really?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I didn't know that. And baseball was playing today. I checked MSQ right before a game, and they lost.
2-0.
That's, that's a tough loss.
Very good game.
Still, they played, you know, that's the D3 North quarterfinals, so that's deep into the tournament. Lacrosse also made a strong playoff run. They lost 14-8 to Winchester in the D2 North quarterfinals last Thursday, which is also a close, a close match, a close game. Last Thursday, Julia Thorstad, she's our new student rep for next year, so you guys will be introduced to her. Every single new student group comes makes me feel like I don't do enough. So Julia Thorstad, Ali Grasso, and Caitlin Gorgini play second in the heptathlon behind Penticott on Thursday, and that wraps up a phenomenal girls' track season, girl track season, where they were state champs in their division. Our fine arts programs also continues to impress. Beauty and the Beast was nominated for Best Stage Management, Best Hair and Makeup, and Best Dance Ensemble. These awards will be hosted by the Mass Educational Theater, MET, on June 23 at the Berkeley Center. And without getting too far ahead of ourselves, they will be doing Shrek the Musical next fall, which is an interesting premise, but like everything Mascar's does, I'm sure it'll be pure gold. They always do a great job. Even though there are only 12 days of school left and no one's counting, academics continue to really be strong. Our student council is sending three delegates, Duncan McNeil, Emily Cooperstein, and our own Lizzie Barrett, to the National Association of Student Councils at the Mall of America. I don't know the exact dates of that, but they'll be going, and Duncan and Lizzie will be presenting their own workshops there, actually. And that's where the best and the brightest of student council and the whole nation go, which is pretty amazing. We have three, three students going. The administration of Biology MCAS also went smoothly this past week, and I remember being so happy as a sophomore, finally finishing MCAS. You're like, "I'm done." And then the next year you get slammed with AP tests, SATs, and just, it's no better. Finals will begin next Wednesday and will continue until Monday. And of course, we had graduation on Friday. I was there. I don't know how many of you guys were there. It was awesome. All the speakers made sure to say how much the class 2018 was awesome, which some of us may disagree with, but it was great. I remember Mr. Bernard, your speech was excellent. Your quote from Robert Kennedy was especially timely.
Thank you, Michael.
So, it's a great ceremony. I always like graduation. I'm looking forward to my next year, so, thank you. I also have, sorry, one piece of student work. This is from my AP US history class. We were tasked with writing a letter to a editor of a newspaper from a certain perspective during the Vietnam War. So for me, I was tasked with writing as a middle-aged father who has a son who's in Vietnam from a poor area of Boston Lake Chelsea, who's, who's, whom many, many sons and daughters fought from that region. So here's the letter and a rubric that I'll pass along with it.
Excellent. Only thing I would say, Michael, I mean, I was at graduation and I would, I was amazed by the speakers.
Well, they were.
I mean, honestly, like, the speakers were fantastic. I mean, Mr. Bernard was a champ because he was not feeling very well and got through the speech, but Owen DeKleen, just to, you know, I mean, it's one of the funniest speeches I've ever heard. I mean, he was on point. It was witty. It was, it was, it was fantastic, so.
And, yeah, the, the whole class this year, actually, as much as I was saying they're not the greatest class, they actually have some excellent, excellent students. Owen is great. He's a, he commands the stage. He's a, he's a theater man. The other speakers were, had great speeches, very profound, excellent messages, but they all didn't, you know, lose track of where they were, what the audience was. So I really liked the speeches, yeah.
I just, I just think Mr. LePratt and Jerral needed to do a little bit more than the handshake, 'cause
Yeah, yeah.
Whenever, whenever they're changing off for the speeches, they had like an elaborate handshake, and then poor Jerral had to get handed off from Mr. LePratt.
I found out later, he wanted to, but she didn't.
High five.
She was good with a high five.
And the class 2018 was the best class ever, ever.
That's what we all said, but I don't know. I don't know. We'll have to prove that next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the MSBA SSBC update, which I don't believe we have anything to update. We have a meeting tomorrow here at 5:30, but outside of that...
And that meeting was canceled.
Who is it?
Tomorrow's meeting was canceled.
Oh, I haven't.
Mr. Kuruji.
Okay, all right, cool. So then there won't be a meeting tomorrow.
With no, no date for a new meeting set.
Okay, all right. Next, new business. Do you wanna?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman, and for the committee. So a number of people are here tonight to be publicly recognized for some outstanding achievements, and the first is from the Batch Elder School, the Explorer Vision team, which, I'm not gonna steal their thunder, their thunder or Mr. McClean's thunder, but have a pretty special achievement to talk to you all about. And I see that, let's see, I've got Patrick, Liam, Damian's over here, I think, right? Alberto, so, who am I missing? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So, we have some really good news to share with all of you, and I think, Mr. McClean, you have a little bit of insight into...
I figure it'd be easiest to give you a little... Speaking of the mic, yep. Of the project, so, our, our third graders, the Bachelor School for, I'm gonna ask Mr. Cassell quickly, how many years now, Bill? How many years?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years of participated in Toshiba Explorer Vision, and it's a great program where students are charged with finding solutions to problems that they think may exist in about 20 years. Over those 15 years, we've had multiple regional winners, and this year we had a national winning team, which they just returned on Saturday from a three-day all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC, where they showcased that. Each of the students have won a $10,000 savings bond, plus some pretty other cool things along the way, I think. But I figured, just to give you an overview, not knowing exactly where we have been, is I'd love to share their little video from the website. So this will give that, will take the pressure off of them, speaking in front of all of you, although they've probably been speaking about this project for the past 72 hours. If you follow on my Twitter feed, they just posted a news feed down in Memphis where they were interviewed as well.
Click the little volume thing on the bottom, on the bottom of the screen. Yep. There is a way to do it, from that.
And so I'd like to present to you, School Committee, the national winners for Toshiba Explorer Vision, Liam Paterson. They are well-versed. If you have any questions, feel free to redirect them right there.
Anyone have questions or comments?
So who's the lead scientist on this team?
Those aren't, those aren't on board.
It was a great, it was a great job, because they were already starting to look at some sort of drone technology, so you guys are really at the forefront of what's going on in the agriculture industry. So someone must have done a little homework to see what was going on. It's really great, 'cause you're spot-on with the technology that's needed. So it's a great job. Congratulations.
I think it's a wonderful idea that you all came up with, having grown up on a farm and having to walk beans and make sure that you get all the weeds and the insects off. It's a smart thing, so, well done.
I just wanna know, how did you guys like the trip to DC, Washington DC? What did you do?
Same thing.
A lot of talking. Did you meet kids from all over the country, too? Yeah?
Some kids from Canada.
From Canada.
What was the funnest part of your trip?
The funnest part was maybe being on TV.
Would you be able to say? I have that on the Twitter feed. I did neglect, one of the, my favorite things about this project, and I say this to the kids when they participate, is the fact that really the school is just the window. Their teacher mentor was Suzanne Callanan. All the teachers, Mr. Cassell, Mrs. Dill, mentored different teams. Ms. Callanan did get to go to DC as well with the, the group and their families. But then also, Mr. McGaffigan and Mr. Russo were the parent coaches. I always interchange coaches and mentor. Was it mentor?
Mentors.
Mentors is what they call the title. So they worked with the kids outside of school hours. I think that Liam, you mentioned that you met for about 10 weeks at about an hour, mostly at the library and the news video interview I saw today. So it's one of those school-home connections where the parents really take the lead and take the students' learning to the next step. So it's one of those really feel-good homeschool connections for a great product.
Well, I also think it's great seeing the parents here, how excited, how proud they are, and they should be. I mean, they should be. And the kids, I mean, we talk a lot about the sports in the town, and, you know, I think that's what people see a lot, but it's great when, you know, academically, we're doing well as well. I mean, again, anything, anybody that wins anything, like, on a national level, that's amazing. It's so hard to do, and, you know, you guys should be very, very proud of yourselves.
I bet.
They look pretty calm, I'll tell you that. They look pretty calm for it, so.
The interview, they were very composed.
Well, that's great.
I just have a question. What was the selection process? Like, did you hear where you fell prior to going, or how did that work?
Yeah, they, I'll take it. They, they whittle it down by the region of the country, so our first notification was that we were the regional winners, and so that reduced the cooldown to six remaining teams from different parts of the country. And then, after you become a regional winner, you take the next steps in the process of creating a website, and what's in the video, that's the video. So you do those extra kind of pieces of work, and then, and then get judged on that for the national competition.
And clearly, they took acting lessons after watching the video. I mean, you guys were great in that.
A lot more footage. I mean, two minutes, it's amazing. But we probably bought 10 minutes of footage we gotta whittle down to that, so.
Great job. You all should be proud of yourselves.
Very, very nice. Thank you.
Do you wanna get a photo for the transcript? You guys wanna get a photo for the transcript, too, while, while they're here?
Do you wanna do that with the committee?
Yeah. Do you wanna do that with the committee?
Do a little photo right here?
The chairwoman? Janine loves being taken. Yes, you should.
All right, so if I could have the young men come down for a photo, please? And the mentors, too?
Mr. Cassell.
And Mr. Cassell, uh, the coach, or whatever.
I don't think teacher, the whole committee in there.
No. Mr. Cassell, could you come down for the photo as well?
Come on, Bill.
All right, just right in front of the...
Oh, I thought it was just gonna be the chair.
Right in front of the table.
There you go.
Yeah, I think.
You guys are used to...
There'll be too many people, probably.
Stay behind them. There we go.
I'm gonna photobomb. Great job, boys.
Did you want to just introduce all of them?
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
Okay.
So, Madam Chairman and members of the committee, we have the honor of having Mrs. Cleary from the Hood School with us tonight, who has another, a very proud accomplishment for the district and for the Hood School. In April, I learned from her principal, Mr. McKay, who may have some words to contribute tonight, too, from Mrs. Cleary, that she had been named a finalist for the New England Patriots STEM Teacher of the Year program, and as it turned out, she was one of five that were, that will be honored in November, I believe. Is that right, Whitney, at a conference? And so I did a little bit of work, and I had the opportunity to see firsthand some of the work she's doing at the, at the Hood School with particularly the Makerspaces and her, her drive for science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and how she imparts that enthusiasm to her students is really, is really remarkable, and it's a, it's a very well-deserved honor for her and for the district. On the website for the program, to be eligible, a teacher must possess these items and probably some others that I know Mrs. Cleary does possess, but they must spend the majority of the school day involved in direct instruction to students. They must be skilled in implementing effective teaching strategies. They must be able to explain a personal teaching philosophy. They must be able to inspire students in STEM-related topics. They must show involvement and leadership in student-related extracurricular activities, and they must be respected by students, parents, and coworkers, which certainly is true for Whitney. So Glenn, did you wanna?
Yeah, you actually, that description does a pretty good job of what I've experienced with Mrs. Cleary. I've had the pleasure over the past 10 years to watch her professional practice grow beyond even, sometimes I have to say, "Okay, help me through this and help me understand this." So she's pioneered so many things with us for science. She, she teaches science in isolation in our fifth grade, but she's, she does much more than that. She consults with colleagues. She organizes Makerspace Day. She runs a news team. She does all these things that are on science theme, and that inspiration piece is key for me. So she's inspiring the children through our Makerspace Days across classrooms and grade levels, but above and beyond that, she's inspiring her colleagues to, to take risks and challenges. She even had me teaching a morning enrichment class around Makerspace, and it was just like, that uncomfortable level that she pushes you to in a very good way, because it makes you professionally challenged, and she does that for everybody in the building. So I, I wanna tell you how proud I am of you and your accomplishment, and, and thank you on behalf of the Hood School. I actually had Mrs. Anthony, our digital learning specialist, couldn't be here tonight, but she actually shared a little quote. "I've had the pleasure and privilege of working with Mrs. Cleary over the past three years. She has a wealth of information and always has exciting and engaging ideas in the STEM field to implement with our students, and I'm thankful for that." So on behalf of all the Hood School, thank you for everything you've done, and I'm so proud of you for getting this award.
When we, I think it was three years ago, maybe two years ago, at the Hood, when we do our annual visits, and we were introduced to the Makerspace, and I was so excited by that, because I'm involved in the tech industry on the periphery, and I know how much was going on, especially out in Silicon Valley and the Makerspace area. And the kids were so excited about it, and, you know, people think it just means technology aware, but it's anything. You can make anything in Makerspace, and that's why I was so excited, 'cause kids get to use their minds and their hands at the same time. And I think all three schools, I believe, all three elementary schools, I believe, are, have Makerspaces now.
And here.
And here. So it's, we're moving in the right direction, and we're moving quickly, and really appreciate all you've done for the school and the district.
I guess I always speak to now. I mean, the, the thing I would just say is that it's great when the kids get involved and how excited they are, but I think a lot of times they take their enthusiasm from the teachers, and so it's great when teachers really care about it and dedicate themselves and really put themselves into it as well. And so, I mean, I think you're, you are the example for the students. You are the one that, you know, kinda fosters that. I mean, I, I, my kids go to the Little, but I remember when I got elected and I did the tour, I remember you in the hallway and all the kids talking to you, and Mr. McKay, you know, at that point in time, going on and on about how much you've done for the Makerspace in the school, and so, I mean, I just wanna congratulate you, and it's great when, you know, somebody that deserves it gets the recognition.
She's had no easy task with that. I mean, to start something from the ground up that we have no idea about, trying to learn the process. We started off with a nice book study, some professional development, and learned from that. So she took a change model and just really implemented really effectively and got it done, which so many of those things kinda hang. She brought it right to the end. It was great. And then she upped the game by creating these all across-school Maker Days, where we mix up the grade levels, and we mix up all the kids, and we go across classrooms, and, you know, it builds community as well as that stimulates that interest in that hands-on STEM stuff. So I, again, and I forgot to mention that she also received a $1,000 grant, so congratulations on that. And we've already spent that, I believe, on some science tables for fifth grade, correct?
Almost as soon as I got here.
Yeah. So I was excited to spend it, so, thank you.
I mean, you just keep raising the bar. I mean, you just gotta get over it again still, so, congratulations.
Thank you so much for the support and the nomination, so.
Thank you, Whitney. So, Madam Chairman and for the committee, so tonight, we are, for the first time, the committee is honoring retirees of the school district, and I think actually, Mrs. Cops, it was a nice idea, because I think it was Mrs. Cops.
Sure idea.
When she was on the committee, when we set our goals, when the committee set its goals last summer, thought it would be nice to bring the retirees in each year and honor them publicly, something that had not been done previously, and I think everybody shared in the feeling that it was a really nice idea. So we have folks from the elementary schools that are retiring to be honored tonight, and on June 25, when the middle school and high school principals will be here to present their school improvement plans, much like the elementary principals are here tonight, we will honor the, the secondary-level teachers that are retiring. So tonight, unfortunately, one of the people that we had hoped to have here, Laurie McBride from the, from the Little School, is not able to join us. She had something come up, but she had originally expressed that she did want to be here, but regrettably could not. So I think the three folks that are being honored tonight have a total of 50 years of service to the district, which is, which is pretty special. And I'm gonna start kind of in ascending order, if I could. So Chet, I'm gonna start with you. Chet earlier has, and I hope all of my, my data is correct in, in the research I did on your tenure here, but has been a teacher here for 10 years in grades three and four, and it's always kinda funny when you go back and you start to look through people's files. You all have a file, some of the things you don't know about people. And I, Chet, I, I learned that in the Enrichments program at the Hood School, you've taught cooking, and piano, and also MCAS test preparation. And I've gotten the, I've had the good fortune of getting to know Chet from my visits to the Hood School over the last few years as the superintendent. Always a smile on his face, just a very positive person. Kids gravitate to him in his classroom. It's really something special to see. So, Chet, we do have a gift for you on behalf of the district, but before, if you don't mind, before you accept the gift, and I'm hoping you'll, you'll open it here, one of the things that we have traditionally done for retiring staff is we ask them to identify a book that they would like to have placed in their school's library, kind of in honor of their time as a teacher. So what I have here tonight is the book that we will be placing in the library at the Hood School, and my administrative assistant does a nice job creating kind of a little sticker. You can look at this, Chet, when you want, if you wanna come up, of your time as a teacher at the Hood School, and this will be placed in the library. And the book, the book that Chet selected is The Story of the Trapp Family Singers by Maria von Trapp. And he, he's, we asked the retirees a question, "Why is, why is this one of your favorite books?" And what Chet wrote is, "This is an early-on favorite, so inspiring. It teaches us that we must have value-driven principles to live by. Maria von Trapp exemplified these principles throughout her life. She made it work for her and her family through devotion, determination, and grit." Certainly some, some wonderful principles that we'd like to see all of our students possess. So, so, Chet, this will be placed in the, in the Hood School library, and if you don't mind, 'cause I'm really not giving you much of a choice either, but I was hoping you'd come down and accept this from the committee and maybe see what the, what the district is presenting you on the occasion of your retirement. Excuse me. Chet, congratulations and thank you. So next, also from the Hood School and also with 10 years of experience, is Karen Kevinman. She was hired as a grade-one teacher in 2008, also taught the second grade and, and kindergarten. She has also taught in the after-school enrichment program. Again, another affinity for cooking, am I right, Karen? And crafts? Yeah, yeah, great, nice. And similarly to, to Chet, in my work as the superintendent, in my visits to the Hood School, you know, and Karen has invited me into her class on a number of occasions to read to students, which is always a favorite thing of mine to do, particularly the, you know, first graders, kindergartners really are, you know, they're a hoot, and it's really kinda fun to go in, and it really grounds me, and it's, it's something special, so I've appreciated that. But again, like Chet, you know, a very, very positive person, smile on her face all the time, and I, I wanna thank you for your 10 years of service in North Reading, Karen. So similarly, we asked Karen if she would select a book to be placed in the, in the library at the Hood School, and she selected a book called Days with Frog and Toad. And again, answering the question, "Why is this book one of your favorites?" Karen wrote, "The Frog and Toad series is one of my favorites because of the humor and the friendship, caring, patience, and tolerance that they show for each other." Again, you know, just a really nice message, I think, for our, for our students. So similarly, Anne has done a nice job with a little inscription here for you, that this will be sent to the Hood School library, so. And the committee also has a gift for you, Karen.
Janine's really getting a lot of pictures taken the last few days.
Chet opened it. You didn't, you didn't open it, right? Don't you wanna open it? Oh, they opened it at the same time. That's right. Two, the two of you can open that, if you'd like. You won't, you won't be...
Spoiling the surprise?
Spoiling the surprise, no. You're very welcome. Thank you. And lastly, tonight, Sandy Romanowitz. Hi, Sandy. Sandy has worked in the district for 30 years. Excuse me. First hired in 1988 as a part-time food services associate at the Bachelor School, worked in food services for nine years through 1997, and then was hired as a general paraprofessional, and then ultimately, she has been the, the face of the school in a, in a lot of ways at the Bachelor as the secretary for Mr. McClean. Am I right, Sandy, since 1997? Is that correct? No, excuse me, since 1999?
I wasn't there when I...
1999. Okay, yes. Thank you. So again, you know, as I said, when you walk into that school, you know, Sandy's often the first person that I see, and just a very, you know, warm and welcoming face, and I know you're gonna be very sadly missed at the, at the, at the Bachelor School. The highlight of, of my, my interactions with Sandy were on her birthday, when they, when they brought in a gorilla to sing a telegram. What's that? A pink gorilla, yeah. It was great. It was great. So Sandy...
She was on Twitter.
Huh? Yeah, yeah. It was really, it was great. You were a good sport. You were a good sport that day too. Good for you. So similarly, we asked, we asked Sandy to identify a book that she would like to have placed in the Batch Elder School library to honor her 30 years of service to that school. And she chose a book called Otis. And in responding to the question, why is this book one of your favorites, Sandy wrote, Otis is a new favorite this year. I have enjoyed reading to the kindergarten classes over the years and have read many great books, but this particular selection really touched me. A most unlikely pair, the old tractor and the young calf form an immediate bond, and through wonderful illustrations, the story unfolds to show the power of friendship between the two. Really is a beautifully illustrated book. I got a chance to look at it this afternoon, it really is nice. So thank you very much, Sandy. And the district has a gift for you as well, if you would like to come down. That's fragile.
I want to thank Mrs. Kopke for coming up with this idea. And it's, it's probably long overdue, as someone who's been on the committee for a long time now, I feel bad that we've been ignoring the retired, not ignoring them, but not publicly recognizing them for all these years. Because it's a really nice thing to do, whether they've been here five years, 10 years, or 30 years, they've given a lot to our kids and they've put a lot of their lives into it. So I'm really happy that Julie came up with this idea at our last goals meeting. But of course, now she's not here to participate with us in an official...
But I'm here celebrating.
Right, but you're not here in an official manner to participate with us, but I, I really thank you for coming up with the idea.
Can I picture the three of them?
The three together?
Yeah.
Mrs. Clary?
Can we have the three, you come up so we can...
Mel, we should have just taken credit for this. She's not here.
No.
I'm kidding.
I think it is nice. It really is.
It's great. I think we should all have to read the books. We'll each take one. I'll take Otis.
That book is adorable. It really is cute.
I haven't seen it, I want to.
It's beautiful illustration.
Is it, has everyone come in for the picture with the three of them?
Whatever you'd like.
Is that what you...
The three retirees together? I think that would be nice, yeah.
Yeah, put the three of them in front of us.
Them all together?
Four of us in back.
Yeah. I think that would be nice, yeah.
Put them in front of you.
Yes.
And then four of us in back, although if you're in back, I don't see you.
You can get a corner in the back.
Yeah, just turn right next to me.
Right next to me. Yeah, that's what I think. Get the three teachers in the middle?
There we go.
And then...
Good job!
That's a good one. That's cool. I try to do something every time I make her angry. This time I like stuck my chest out, so she'll notice it right away.
Why did you do that in the picture?
All right.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the presentation from the elementary school improvement plans.
Thank you.
Are you using PowerPoint, Dr. McKinnon?
Yes, PowerPoint. I have a hard time with the Google Drive and the changing of the files and stuff, so I just go right back to PowerPoint.
It's up to you.
We have a...
Probably. If you mind if we... Absolutely. It'll be quick, all right.
Skip that, we're going to jump down to the North Reading Education Association contract agreement, and then we'll go back to the presentation.
Madam Chairman.
I believe...
So we noticed a, kind of a small error on page 25, but I think before the committee, you mind if I share that with you now and before the committee votes?
Yeah.
So what I have for you here is a new page 25, and, and then the back page is kind of a tract changes to show you what's different. It's essentially around how the elementary curriculum specialists are identified. This has, this is just reflecting what the existing practice is around the English Language Arts and Literacy and the grade level distribution. So you can see that on the back page is, is kind of a, just a delineation that's broken out a little bit differently. And then we also discovered that the change in the department now with the advent of digital learning is now no longer called business education, but it's the entrepreneurship program and the stipend was wrong, was actually too high. That's a stipend that's reflected now. You see it there for the three fiscal years in blue?
Yes.
And then I think the last thing at the bottom about the middle school, high school library media, the word monitor is the one that actually is the, is the title that we used in the posting for that position. Again, it was just a clerical thing.
So, Madam Chair, if I, if I could ask a question, Mr. Bernard, does this impact the approval by the NREA?
I, I ran it by Peter Kane last week, the president, and he responded today that there was no issue.
Okay.
So I did, I did do that with Patrick Daly's help.
Thank you.
That was a good catch on the entrepreneur...
Digital learning and entrepreneurship of the two departments now, correct?
Yeah.
So again, I don't think they're significant, but I thought you should know about them before you took a vote.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Mike, I believe you had a comment that you wanted?
I can wait. I don't know if there's a presentation.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna present the...
All right. So Mr. Webster.
So we came to an tentative agreement, I believe it was April 30th or somewhere thereabouts in, in late April with the NREA on this three-year contract. And the first thing I want to do, I want to commend the NREA and their negotiating team under the direction of the NREA President Peter Kane. Incredibly well-prepared, incredibly hardworking, they ran a lot of numbers, they had spreadsheets, they came in with details, and they did a great job. Negotiations aren't easy. I always, this is my third teacher's contract I've done, and I always, I really don't like it because I love teachers and I hate sitting across from them and telling them they can't have something. And that's what negotiations turns out to be, you can't have this, but you can't have that. But this was, as I said, a really good team. We started late 2017. Mr. Bernard, Michael Conley, Patrick Daly, Liam O'Connell, our counsel, myself and Jerry Venetia represented our side. And I would say it was one of the most cordial and professional negotiating sessions I've been involved in since I've been on the school committee. It was outstanding on both sides parts, I believe. So the contract that we will be voting on tonight runs through, what do I have it here? Runs through 2021, through June 30th, 2021. The highlights of the contract, cost of living adjustments are 2% for the next fiscal year, 2.5% for fiscal 2020, and 3% for fiscal 2021. Another major step we took was to make sense out of the jumble that was the stipends that we pay for extracurricular activities. It seems like just over the years, those stipends have kind of taken on a life of their own and no one knew why this stipend was this much, why that stipend was that much. A committee, a subcommittee was formed early on. I think Mr. Dale, didn't Dr. Daly was part of that subcommittee?
It was actually in the last, in the last contract.
Right.
And then it kind of went dormant. And then, yes, we reinvigorated that this year.
They did a tremendous amount of study to find out, you know, the popularity of the clubs, when do the clubs meet, just all kinds of numbers to help decide, determine what stipends should go to the advisors. And they came in with a very, with an excellent presentation. And another big change is in the arts department, where there was a compelling case made to the school committee, or at least to the negotiating team at the time, that we should really start treating the arts department like we treat the sports, the athletic program. And by that I mean paying stipends that are close to or equal to what coaches get. If you look at some of the, some of the advisors in the arts program, especially at the high school, they put in as much if not more time than many of our head coaches for varsity programs. So we, we spent a good deal of time reviewing that, we approved it. I will tell you now, and we will be voting on this later this year, there, it's going to result in a fee for the arts program. It'll be a fairly small fee, I believe. It won't be approaching what the athletic fee is. But in order to pay these larger stipends to the advisors, a small fee will be required. I think that's a fair way to put it. Other highlights, the sick leave buyback provision is now capped at a maximum benefit of 200 days at $50 per day, and that's effective July 1st, 2000, yeah, 2020. And that's about a $3,500 reduction, I believe, in what the current benefit is. And also the early retirement incentive provision will be eliminated at the conclusion of this contract. Those are two areas that the school committee and association have been working on over the last three negotiating sessions, in the last nine years or six, nine years, to, we've been working to, to lower or reduce those. Those, a lot of these provisions came into being when we hit a really bad economic slump in the 90s, I believe. And a lot of benefits were added because teachers weren't getting any increases in annual salaries. And now that salaries are becoming, you know, in my opinion, a lot fairer than they were, you don't need as many of these benefits. It's hard to convince the, the association of that, but they went along with us on this and, and we kept sick leave buyback in place at a maximum benefit of $10,000. So again, I think it was an excellent negotiating session. We had many sessions, seven or eight sessions, I believe, we met. And for a first time, president of the association, I think Peter Kane did an outstanding job of keeping his team unified and presenting, you know, their, their demands to us.
Well, I just want to thank Mel in particular, and Jerry, who's not here anymore, and also Michael and Mr. Bernard for the work that they did on this, because, I mean, just from executive session, I know that there was a lot of hours spent in this. And, you know, I mean, I, I think this is probably one, if not the hardest job of anybody on the school committee. And, I mean, Mel has done a lot of these contracts over the years and this is prob, I would, just from talking to people, I think they say this is by far probably the hardest contract to negotiate. And so, it's a lot of work that's, that gets put into this. And I also know that, you know, Mel and Jerry really care about the teachers here. And it, it's got to be painful at times, like we all would like to pay more to some of the people, you know, that are doing this and, you know, watching our kids. And so it's, it's not easy. The other thing I would just say is about the, it's not just the numbers. I mean, I think there was a plan by, you know, by Jerry and Mel from the very beginning about what to do. There was some very important clarification of language as well, which honestly, if you didn't have the experience that they did, would have been missed. And it was just, you know, just really clarifying a contract to get a good, good language going forward that we can all build off of. And so I just think it's really important to, you know, have people that can do that. I think the, when I looked at the contracts when I got on the committee, the, the one thing that I was really concerned about was like, it just seemed like there was no rhyme or reason to the stipends. And so it's great that there's more clarity on that now. And I guess my only question, which I think you just answered, Mel, was the, the fees for the performing arts that will go to pay the stipends, is, is that all it goes to pay for? Or is there something, is it clear about what that will go to pay for?
It will just pay, it'll pay for mainly for the advisors for arts and music activities, theater and music activities at the elementary school, middle school, and high school level. And there'll be, I'm assuming there'll be differing levels of fees at the, at the different school, different levels of schools.
Yeah, the idea is that the, the user fee and then any other additional revenue from either ticket sales or other sources will help support the stipends and then all other expenses to put on the annual productions, musical productions.
We're anticipating having a presentation for you on, at the next meeting, at the 25th, on a, on a fee structure.
The one other thing I wanted to add was this, this contract puts our teachers squarely in the middle, in some cases ahead of teachers in comparison communities. We did, we did make a few changes to make sure that our teachers got elevated slightly to put them right back in the, in the center of, they're not at the top, but they're definitely, they're far from the bottom also.
I think that's an important point. I think a big part of making adjustments to the salary schedule was very much driven by a lot of data of comparable districts.
Right.
Of what's, you know, area districts that are in the geographical, you know, area and location near North Reading, as well as our, our DART, our comparable districts. Certainly we were, you know, any adjustments were driven by what was the market competitive to ensure that, as Mel just said, we may, you know, we're at the top, but certainly we're going to fall behind over the length of the three years.
And one last thing, it, it was easier negotiating this year because three years ago, we put in place a new salary structure, which is more standard, which is a standard salary structure versus what North Reading used to have. So that made it easier for us to negotiate a contract this year.
We have something like 18 steps and we...
Well, we, we had, we had our own, we had our own credit system. We had, we didn't follow the norm in a lot of areas on a school contract. And now...
Our comparisons to districts was easier this time.
Right.
Because it was more similar in structure.
Yes.
Mel, a question for you on the early retirement incentive. Can you give me a little bit of history on why that's being removed?
John might have a better answer than that, yeah.
So when we had the discussion in the negotiations, we think, I think this is a holdover from many contracts ago.
It is.
And I think at a time when there did not exist a, an early, kind of an early retirement option for teachers through the Massachusetts Teachers Retirement System. But with the, with the advent of what's called the Retirement Plus, and teachers can buy into that by paying additional contribution to their retire, their own personal retirement account, I think that an early retirement incentive seems to be obsolete at this point because it's almost, you're getting the benefit of the state retirement system and they really shouldn't be. Yeah, it is. It is redundant. And so we don't have a, a lot of teachers that take advantage of the early retirements or, or at least eligible for, but we do have, we do have cases where, we have them this year, that if they meet the criteria as it's outlined in the contract, then they would, they would be eligible. And it's, I think it was a significant win for the district to have that sunsetted at the end of this contract.
This is another thing, I'm pretty sure this was put in at one time for financial reasons with the goal of getting older, more expensive teachers out of, out of school districts and hiring young, less expensive teachers, which you can say, well, that's a great way to run a business, but I don't know if it's a great way to run a school district, but, you know, you're kind of driving experienced teachers out. And, and I know that that's when early retirement incentives were, were brought in, again, when financial times were tough. So that was another reason to, to sunset it. And we've worked on it over the last two contracts, we've significantly reduced the benefits of that early retirement, where it was getting to a point where now we could, we could sunset it.
And I think the committee felt that, or at least Mel and Jerry, as, as the representatives of the committee, felt that to, to do that three years out was the responsible thing to do.
Right.
Because it could be people that have a plan.
Exactly.
To retire in a year or two, that were expecting...
Right.
...that benefit. And so I think having it now and do, it would be four years out, somebody would, you know, have to be thinking about whether or not they would retire.
I'm assuming other towns are similar, they're, either do not have this type of incentive program or are doing away with them.
A lot of towns do not have this type of program.
Some do, you know, it's like the sick leave buyback too.
Right.
You know, they're different from community to community, but I think, I think this is, I think this was a significant gain for the committee.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a brief statement I'd like to read. Thank you. Madam Chair, I wish to acknowledge the efforts of the school committee and the North Reading Education Association bargaining teams to bring about the agreement that's pending before the committee this evening. As the members of the committee who have served on the financial planning team are aware, the town's resources are limited. Each year, when we kick off the following year's budget process, the outlook is challenging at best. We have begun every budget process during my tenure with a projected deficit, and together we have worked to solve the deficit. A couple of years ago, we began incorporating long-term forecasting in an effort to better inform the decisions made during the pending budget process. process. This further highlighted the challenges that we can all anticipate to face in the coming years, although there is some hope that pending housing and future economic development will mitigate those challenges. Under state law, my role is not to prescribe the strategy of the school committee's negotiations. It's simply to cast a vote in favor or against at this moment. My vote tonight's not an indicator either way of the position of the North Reading Board of Selectmen. I did not participate in negotiations, although I wish to thank the superintendent for briefing me on the content of this agreement prior to tonight's vote. Based on the challenges I highlighted a moment ago, I do have concerns regarding the affordability of the agreement. While there are in financial incentives that were just outlined a moment ago, I would caution all parties to the agreement that, as is the case with non-school collective bargaining agreements as well, there may be a time during the term that it's, that difficult decisions regarding existing or proposed programs may have to be made in order that the agreement may continue to be honored. In deference to the process and strategy followed by the school committee, with the understanding that the school committee is prepared to take steps within its budget to absorb the cost of the agreement if necessary, and continuing to be respectful of the relationship fostered in the financial planning team, I will be voting in favor of the agreement. Thank you for the opportunity to offer these comments.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? All right. I'll accept a motion to, what do you say, ratify the contract?
I guess I'll move to approve a three-year contract between the North Reading School Department and the North Reading Education Association, beginning July 1st, 2018, and running through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Well done, Mel.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Appreciate your representation. Appreciate you taking out of order as well, Madam Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wish you all a good evening.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. McKay and...
Dr. McKay and Mr. Colleen.
Oh, that's right. Dr. McKay. And Mr. Colleen. Chris Molly's not making it?
She had that way.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I thought she should go to that.
Michael, you need your microphone. Oh, no, they don't need it now. Make sure you take it back. Yeah. We need to hear your, we need to hear your wisdom.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having us. My name is Dr. McKay, I'm principal at the Hood School, and this is Mr. Sean Colleen. We're, we don't have Mrs. Molly with us tonight. She had an appointment that she just couldn't miss. So, we'll be going through her portion of the school improvement plan as well. The interesting thing about that, as a way to frame it, is that you'll see a lot of similarities between the three anyway. So, there'll be certain points where there's some unique differences from each school. And then there's those things that are pretty standardized amongst the three of us, that we try to, like, work together collaboratively to develop these plans and to set the mission and the goals for the school. With that being said, our three, our three shared goals, and you'll always see that first top one for us, is that we believe that the teacher and student and the president of content is the most important thing. So if we can minimize class size and keep it at acceptable rates, we're going to do that to the best of our ability as the leaders of those three elementary schools. It's just the most important thing for us, and we stand by that. Many of you may know that the accountability formulas are changing, and we're still, Mr. Colleen and I love to banter back and forth around all the accountability formulas and the changes in them, and maximizing our opportunities within each one of them. So we really are trying to grasp what that new accountability system looks like and how it impacts our practices within our building. So we took a really nice opportunity to break those down and come up with this, this goal around accountability for us, and specifically in ELA and math. So we're looking at a 25% increase in the number of students scoring in the meeting and exceeding expectation categories for all students participating in the standard ELA, MCAS, or Math MCAS, thus decreasing the number of students in partially meeting and not meeting categories. And you'll see that carried throughout the school improvement plans across the three schools. And we love to always talk about, why do we make a specific decision? Why are we doing these kind of things? What are we looking at? And we use that data-driven decision-making model. So when we sit down and we talk about things, we're saying, okay, but where's the data that proves that or makes us want to do that? This is a nice opportunity for me to recognize the members of my school council. It's, it's definitely a challenge. It's getting people from all different places coming to the school. And they really actually appreciate it as an intellectual exercise. It's just, it's a great opportunity for them to understand why we do some of the things we do. So, I want to thank Mrs. Wright. She's currently a first-grade teacher at the Hood School. Lisa Santilli, who actually had been on the school council prior to my arrival 10 years ago, so I was excited to have her back. She's the community representative. I have Mrs. Rukayman. She's a special education teacher. Myself, and I have Mrs. Carlson and Mrs. Del Rossi as my parent representatives. And they put in a lot of hours around this, helping me wordsmith a few of the things. So I really appreciate their efforts. A couple of their kiddos actually ended up in the picture on our hound dog hangout, so that's pretty nice. So our highlights from this year, you know, we love our co-teaching model. We find it very effective in some of the things that, to meet some of our goals inside the school. High-needs cohort, which is students with disabilities, English-language learners, and economically disadvantaged students, still achieve high results. And we continue to work that model to meet their needs. You've already heard a little bit about our Makerspace Days. So we've, I think we're going on number four right now. We did one of them around the Read Across America theme. And basically, we've maximized the Makerspace, so that hands-on learning STEM activities around also community building, where we basically take the students and mix them across grade levels. And within each classroom, you'll have a range of students from K to five, working together to receive a cha, working together to achieve a challenge. So it's kind of like taking that hands-on STEM piece and also building community around it. We have one scheduled for this Friday. This was an auction year, so I'm sure many of you know that those auction years are very busy for our parents' association, and they've done a wonderful job with that. There's just so many activities that go around it with the planning and all that. So, I'm very thankful to them. We had an introduction of our school-wide community meetings. We had always done one at the beginning of the year, setting the behavioral expectations around the school. And we've really felt as a faculty that it was, it was nice to revisit those. So, we use the SRR model, so we're safe, responsible, respectful. So this year, we've revisited each one of those, and we're going to expand upon it as a separate meeting, and we're going to expand upon it as we go forward. We have a new opportunity in art, and a fairly new opportunity in music. So we had a revamped Fine Arts Night, which was raved about. So we're very excited to do that. So that's that goal that we talked about, Goal A for math and Goal B for ELA. So this is our goal, teaching and learning. You'll see that we go through four categories that are measured on our rubrics for achievement as principals and administrators. So the first area is teaching and learning, and we talk about the decrease and the increase of those student populations within ELA and math. Our focus areas to get us there, implementation of best practices to meet the needs of our learners. This year, we'll focus on differentiated instruction across settings. I think we have some opportunities to improve that practice across all classrooms rather than just in the co-talk classrooms. So we'll be revisiting some of the Department of Education work on inclusionary practices that came out recently. We have our data-driven decision-making model. I know you'll hear a lot about that. And the teachers, they get it. They understand that that's why, that's what drives what I do. So we'll look at that to improve learning outcomes and wrap our minds around that new accountability system and maximize opportunities within it. And we'll continue to implement our co-teaching model across grade levels, and we'll continue to push, focus on push-in service delivery model rather than the pull-out service delivery model. Management and operations, to provide a safe learning environment for all children. A healthy and safe environment in all schools provides optimal learning environment. To that end, student support services and a strong infrastructure for plant maintenance must be in place. Facilities must be able to accommodate the needs of teaching and learning. So our focus areas under that are, continue our school-wide SRR program. So that's that safe, responsible, respectful, all around the school. We talk about it with the children. We're pretty proud that whenever you ask a Hood School student what the school rules are, they, they're SRR, we're safe, responsible, respectful. We also embedded in that have more of like a caught-being-good program, where children get caught engaging in SRR behaviors. And the teacher puts in a nomination, and from the nominations, somebody gets selected, and they get to put their hand up and paint on the high-five wall of fame. So we're going to continue with that. We recognize that we have some concerns around dismissal procedures that are bubbling up again. I believe it was seven or eight years ago that we revamped our whole dismissal procedure. I have a feeling that that might be something we're looking at, based on a few of the concerns that have been brought up recently. We, we need to get better, focusing on a coherent approach to social-emotional learning. So we're going to start with a book study and try to go through a change model that way as, you know, start with the book study and then see how we can use that to improve our practice at the Hood School. And like I had said, an increased or an addition of school-wide community-building meetings will occur. Family and community engagement. I know that my colleague here, Mr. Colleen, has already mentioned his Twitter account three times. So I'm trying to keep up with him on this whole Twitter thing, so.
That was four, because you just mentioned it.
See? So, educating children is a community effort involving parents as well as the community resources. It provides a continual reinforcement of the academic and social ideals embraced by the school and community. Our objective is to promote the learning growth of all students and the successes of all staff through the effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school, including the school committee, the school parents' association, school councils, school staff, and the school community at large. In our world, in my school, we talk a lot about hand-in-hand, together we can. And we really feel like that's our motto, that's what we do. We feel that we can accomplish so many goals at the Hood School if we work with all stakeholder groups to meet the needs of our kids. So, increase stakeholder outreach would be a goal for me, and engagement through the use of technology, the website and Twitter. Continue with our grade-five student council. If you've been to the Hood School or have been to any Hood School events, you'll see that they're always out there. They have their matching green shirts on, and they're sending our message. We will continue to raise funds and awareness regarding societal needs. Basically, if something occurs, an event, a tragic event, or something like that, they get together. They work together to raise funds for that. Or when it comes time for us to do our food pantry donations, they collect all those. So it's definitely a nice little group to work with. Mrs. Cleary is actually an advisor on that group. So she does a really good job with that, along with Ms. Cheever, Mrs. Sherman. Many of you have been to our Read Across America events, so continue to participate in those. Please come. And if you get the invitation, it's definitely one of those, those nice experiences at the Hood School. It's one of those marked events that we enjoy. I think we have some fun with it. We've done some changes over the past 10 years, tweaks different ways. And each time, it comes out special in a different way, and we enjoy it. So we'll continue with that. I was approached by an Eagle Scout recently to do a project at the Hood School, and he's going to be building us a storage shed. So I put that on here as a focus area, because it's under facilities and maintenance. It's certainly a concern for us with some storage issues that we're having. So I'm enjoying working with him. And we recently got our building permit, so that was a fun process to go through with him. So, next one is hand-in-hand. We talked about that, that mission of the school, like how we view things, and we view it that we work together collaboratively to meet the needs of kids. We will work with our parents' association to establish a grant process for teachers. So, basically, that, what's, what's happening with that is, under management operations, we're looking at, we have all these opportunities, much like the Makerspace, or we've recently purchased some standing desks to go across classrooms. But who ultimately is making that decision? Is it me, only forwarding things that I see as important, or is it coming from a different angle from the school committee? So, when the PA funds are being utilized, it's kind, there's no real rhyme or reason to my advocacy around certain projects. So, I'm working with our incoming parents' association to establish more of like a grant process, where two or three times a year, teachers can write up how much they want or what they want. And then we'll bring it through that process through the parents' association to see. They might have more questions, they might approve it, they might not even like it. So, definitely have some framework around that. So the management of that's a little tighter for me. And our playground area definitely needs some work. I think it needs more work than, than we're able to do. So I've already met with our newest president, and her and I seem to be on the same page around that. It's less about the aesthetically pleasing environment for me. It's actually more about, like, the safety of that space, because our children that we love so much are out there playing football every day, but now they've worn the dirt down to actual stone. So we're moving where they're playing football and all those kind of things. So I think there's some opportunities out there for us to get a little better. Professional culture. Implement our philosophy of working together as a learning community to foster high-performance climate focused on student learning. So a professional school culture demonstrates a commitment to high standards that foster high performance and demonstration of student learning. Increased focus on student learning as well as the analysis of student learning and the associated discussion on this topic improves student So, inside the Hood School, one of the mechanisms that we have is these study groups. And each study group is responsible for taking on a specific topic, researching it, and reporting it back to the entire school. This year, we had co-teaching. We had a school climate group and a Makerspace group. In years past, we've had school-wide behavior, much like how our SRR behavior map was developed. Or we had uninterrupted literacy blocks as a group, and they worked with the school schedule to maximize school scheduling. So, those are the three that are currently now. There might be some movement over the summer that might come out of, like, a push from a Mrs. Cleary or somebody like that who has something that they're intellectually interested in. And we just may pursue it as a school. We may do it for one year. It may carry across for several years. Our school, so inside of that school climate group, so we have the study groups, we have what we refer to as the Happy Hound Dogs, the Hood School Hound Dogs. And the teachers love to get together, and they, they have team-building activities, collegial-building activities that they do inside and outside of school. And some of these things are Hound Dog Days, like I believe last Wednesday was Ice Cream Sundays. This Wednesday is something like, iced teas are being delivered to the school at lunchtime for the teachers to enjoy. They manage it all themselves. They do it all themselves. It's great. And they do these morale pals. So when they, they leave presents for beginning of the year, they sort out who is interested in morale pals, and they pick a name, and then they support that person throughout the year with special prizes and gifts. And it's anonymous until the end. We're having our reveal, I believe, on June 22nd. And then the data person in me says, okay, we've collected some data over the past years around school climate. The Tell Math survey was one of those mechanisms. And then we did our own internal audit around school climate. But it's certainly something that we really need to collect that data and, and look at it again, and just to make sure that my perceptions of a happy place is everyone's perception, because there's that direct correlation between staff collegiality and feeling good about a workplace and student performance and student level of engagement. So. New initiatives this year. So we talked about school-wide focus meetings with the school psychologist. That's Dr. Mansfield. Focus on the new accountability system. We'll research and improve our pre-referral practices. We have to define inclusionary practices as a means to improve our differentiated instructional practices. We recently did a workshop, and you'll see empowering writers across the three presentations tonight, Parents' Association block grants, and the re-improvementation of a third kindergarten, a hybrid. So, Hood School has, is getting an additional kindergarten this year and their hybrid model. So, that definitely takes some planning and some working out of specific things. Would you like me to just keep go, do you want us to stop and answer specific questions about the Hood? Or do you want to do the whole presentation and then ask at the end?
I think it might work better to do all three. That way, if we're asking a question that's going to be done at the other schools, then you don't have, you know what I'm saying?
So, at the EF Little School, she, I spoke with Chris today, and she had mentioned that, you know, how happy she was that the work that this group had put forward, the amount of hours that they had spent talking about developing this plan. So Linda Emery was the parent representative, Kate Schultz was the other parent representative, Debbie Aldrich, Michael Maloney, and Mrs. Molly. So, a thank you to them for working with her to develop... So a thank you to them for working with her to develop this school improvement plan. So her highlights for this year was completed a wind block maker space event designed by staff and parents, workshops facilitated by staff, parents and community members. She increased technology opportunities in the classroom for research, assessment and practice of math facts and skills. Worked with faculty and staff to develop new school rules, expectations, and begin to research positive behavioral intervention and support systems, so PBIS. Expanded data days to include eye-ready both ELA and math and use data to plan intervene, interventions and adjust teaching practices. And continued to encourage the participation in SEI or Sheltered English Immersion endorsement workshops. At least one teacher at each grade level at the Little School is endorsed, um, as well as classroom observations focused on UDL, Universal Design for Learning, and No Atom. So the, you'll see the theme, the goal is the same, so she has the same goal. Basically, our kids are different, so we have different margins within those goals, but the goal remains the same across the three schools. So in teaching and learning, her focus areas were continue to focus efforts on improvement of the high need subgroup, response to intervention practices, tiered and flexible grouping, Title One math instruction, co-teaching opportunities slash realignment in her grade four, um, and self-contained as well, and redefine revisit inclusion versus pull-out services. Implement year one of the empowering writers and research and implement strategies to improve social emotional learning, mindfulness, PBIS and those kind of, um, items. Peer observation scheduled monthly for faculty to visit other classrooms and increase win opportunities to three times per year. Under management and operations. The Little School will be exploring social emotional learning, positive behavioral intervention and supports as well as mindfulness. Faculty and staff continue to participate in pause to address social issues, provide choices and opportunities for students to express their creativity, ability to problem solve and work collaboratively, and continue with the top dog student recognition for good leadership, citizenship, et cetera. She's also very excited to be dealing with a new gym floor.
I think.
That's something.
And my guess is Mr. Conley probably already has that project underway.
Yes, well, it's going to start your license.
We have a date, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I know she was very appreciative of that and very thankful to have that for her school. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Colleen.
Uh, family and community engagement, very similar to the other schools. Her focus areas, still the parent involvement, involvement in committees and events at the school, whether it be the PTO, school council, the win workshops, mystery reader, parents on parade, um, the continuous school council guest speaker series. She wants to encourage new Twitter followers for the Batch Bulldog and at EE Little School, and then participate in curriculum nights during the school year.
Mr. Colleen, you want to move the mic just to, I, in case people are listening home?
Are you thinking you can hear me? You don't think I'm loud enough?
No, if it's. No, no, that's, that's for NorCal.
The cable won't pick you up if you're not.
That's for NorCal.
All right. The professional culture, I know at the Little School, they're spending a lot of time working on the professional culture with the leadership team to improve relationships, utilizing the results of the staff survey, using team building activities both in and outside of school, community service with staff and students Friday gene day, collections to support specific organizations. Um, other community service events include North Running Food Pantry, Coach for Kids, and the American Heart Association. Encourage peer observations and debriefing feedback and also the book studies are very popular with the teachers when you want them to get together and discuss some different areas. Teachers teaching teachers, coaching, and also some of the social emotional subjects like mindfulness and how to use yoga to address, uh, movement breaks. The new initiatives for that would be the PBIS work that she's doing with, uh, Jolene Pepper, the social emotional learning, the implementation of empowering writers, the increased choice opportunities, uh, for win and maker space, peer observation and feedback, and accountable talk which stimulates higher order thinking, helping students to learn, reflect on their learning, and communicate their knowledge and understanding. Whoa, Bachelor School. I would like to recognize Mr. Eric Evans is here, he's on my, um, school council and Ms. Sarah, he's over to the left. Uh, Ms. Harrington just left, um, she was here for a second. I know that they were, um, coming both of the school improvement plan presentation also to recognize, um, Mrs. Romanowicz, um, her retirement on behalf of the school council on that. This is probably the last time that I'll be making a school improvement plan presentation because Mrs. R is retiring at the end of July, um, so I will be like drawing that in sand for you to come by and visit at the school. Um, it's, it's hard to believe that for 17 years, um, she has been my partner in crime and has kept me happy, um, engaged in the work, um, and I couldn't ask for, um, a better assistant in my time being, so, um, I'm very anxious, um, about the next chapter, but I'm very happy for her after her 30 years in North Running to, uh, congratulate her retirement. Uh, the school councils represented by Tina Boric, who is also serves as the co-chair, Mr. Evans, Ms. Harrington, myself, Marion Lay, uh, similar to Dr. McKay, uh, she was a former teacher at the Bachelor School that retired. They're great community representatives to, to pull in when, um, they have that educational background, a little institutional knowledge as well. And Sandra O'Connell, uh, serves as a faculty rep as well. Uh, over the highlights for our, our year, we did a lot with high standards and what they looked like and continued to launch the maker space. I think Wendy Cleary really for the district, um, I think the Hood School kind of pioneered that work, launched a little bit sooner than everybody, um, but that was great because we were able to learn from them. Um, and Mrs. Boric, um, for, on our end, took that lead at the Bachelor School, um, with Chris Lindsay, um, and we've had some, quite a bit of success, not only similar to with the whole school challenges, um, but just the use of that through digital learning time and then also making it available for classrooms and teachers to access that through their schedule of time permits. This is the second year of our full implementation of Eureka Math. We've done a lot of work through collaboration with our grade level teams to look at vertical alignment, to document the expectations and address any scope and sequence concerns. This is kind of new data through the accountability, everything that's going on, um, with the new math program, we're going to have to pay attention to the results over the next few years, both from the state and any of the common assessments we use to kind of measure our success and where we want to go. And that's that little bottom part for not only the one test, but what we're using inside to get a better handle on what our students' progress is and their growth. Data analysis is going to be a huge focus. Um, I, it was very challenging this year because a lot of the data, everything that was coming from the state, we didn't really know what they were going to do with it and how it was going to be presented, so just the release of what the accountability system was recently has us working pretty hard to try to figure out, um, how we're going to respond to that and that's why you see the teaching and learning goals as consistent as they are for the two years, we're probably thinking, before the state will kind of tell us where they want to go, similar to they have in the past. Um, we've been using a lot of our common assessment data, which is very consistent in all three schools, so it's great. We can have conversations at grade level, district wide, and then come back together and look at some of our school-based best practices as well. Use that data to develop our student learning and possibly our professional practice goals as part of ed evaluation. And then use professional time to revisit how we're going to progress monitor and update goals and student learning targets as needed. School safety continues to be a huge priority in North Running public schools. Uh, we want, you know, as part of that, we're teaching our students to be good citizens, what are our character traits that we think are important? We do that through our spotlight program, um, both at the classroom and school level. Uh, our community meetings give us opportunities to focus on these traits, do some troubleshooting with teachers and students because they've, not only do we, our school-based meetings, but we have our grade level-based meetings, so if they're dealing with teasing at a particular level, grade level, they're allowed to bring in an activity and bring that to all 80 kids at a grade level versus just 20 kids in little pockets, try to get that consistent message to our students. And then we're really starting to focus on how to carry that over through the parts where there are fewer adults. You know, really teaching children to make good choices, to be thinking about what would happen, you know, with consequential thinking, understanding how to be nice when the adults aren't as prevalent, you know, the harder times, the less structured times, lunch, recess, um, and the school bus. The teaching and learning is all the same, it, it's a little different at each school, but that number, it's, it's, it's not even the moving the kids from the, um, almost meeting, partially meeting expectations, it's keeping all the other kids that are meeting expectations. You know, those cut lines are, um, a lot of students are very close to that line as well. Using the data to help us drive our student learning and professional practice goals, that's something we will do in September right away. We are expecting to get more preliminary data from the state a lot earlier, um, including some of it this month. The empowering writers is something that we're doing with our professional development for faculty and we're hoping that that might help us vertically, um, also consistently between the three schools to have a greater impact for those fifth graders entering the middle school as well. Um, and co-teaching is a, is a thriving practice in all three schools, whenever we can go in to properly support students in their classrooms and then also be able to look at when we want to, um, provide additional support for students who may not be identified, um, through special education. Management and operations, it's that safe learning environment for all. Um, we continue to look at our survey data from students and families, um, to make sure that they're prepared to take risks in the classroom, provide enrichment and educational opportunities to address documented areas of need. Um, and social emotional learning is going to be a huge, um, content area for the nor, uh, elementary schools over the next few years. We're also working with the newly released emergency operations plan and our incident management teams to review best practices more frequently in response to different scenarios. So using different professionals at different times to try to make sure that we're talking about how we possibly could respond to different situations. Uh, family, community engagement, North Running is, is generous in, in so many ways. Financially, um, the support we get from our parent organizations, the BPO, the auctioneers, um, but one thing we're really looking at is the investment of time and the value of that and looking at different ways that we can bring volunteers into the school, um, to provide a little bit of support, whether it's to free up somebody else to be able to provide direct services to teachers or in some cases having parent volunteers work with students to, um, you know, give a little enrichment assignment or extension of learning, um, or a little remediation if needed. That was the first one and then also going on with trying to get our staff and administration to be more involved with the school council, parent organization, parent organization meetings and events. There's so, we get so much, um, support from all of these and the investment is so great. I want more people to be actively participating, so it isn't always, like Dr. McKay said, um, something that I'm bringing forward be, on behalf of the faculty. I'd like them to be able to have the opportunity to work with some of these very talented individuals. Professional culture, standard four, um, is super important in what we're trying to do, um, at the Bachelor School. We have, we've really been trying to mainstream the goal development for educator evaluation to, um, focus on professional culture and teaching all students. We're really strong in standard one and we're developing in standard three. We're, we're having more conversations about how the work in standard four and two could impact student learning. And we're trying to use ed eval as part of that to get more opportunities to progress monitor and provide feedback. And then you see again the state performance data coming along and making sure we're aware of that. As Dr. McKay opened with, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we do together to talk of these things. You see so many of the initiatives are, are started somewhere and brought forward and we have such profound success that we try to duplicate, um, in all of our schools to make sure our kids get a similar experience whenever possible, but at the same time, at the same time, maintain our own school identity. So thank you for the time to present the school improvement plans and Dr. McKay will take any questions.
Thank you.
Just need to vote to accept the plans, not to approve, just to accept.
Um, is there any questions or concerns or discussion that you want to ask Dr. McKay?
Well, first can I say that now, I, I made sure that I did my time sheet page correct the sheet.
I remember that.
And how I did that is I copied Mrs. Molly's.
And Dr. McKay, your, your Twitter game, at least the Hood Schools Twitter game is pretty good. I see a lot of, uh, hood tweets, a lot of hood tweets. In fact, I don't want, I think there may be more hood tweets than batch tweets, Mr. Colleen.
I definitely have had a tough, uh, four to six weeks of it, and I'll be cut away.
Got to step that game up.
He definitely, he definitely has a lot of plugs for his own number of followers, so.
Yes.
You know, I'm. I just think it's based on the ratios of students, right? Smaller schools.
Right, exactly, right.
I have a question in regards to the SRR.
Yes.
The Hood School. Um, yours is like good citizenship or something, what's, um?
So we have our spotlight program.
Spotlight program.
Which kind of focuses on five character traits that we cycle back around, um, two times each school year. So now we're back in leadership.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Molly, she has something similar to that?
I believe she calls it top dog.
Top dog, yeah.
So it, is it all kind of done the same way where I know the Hood School is anonymous and then you kind of draw a name out, but how does the Little and the Batch do it?
Like the student recognitions.
So our student recognitions, you're recognized by an adult in the school and they know who recognized it goes on the certificate. So they're, and we, we do that through, um, our monthly spotlight meetings on the focus of that trait, so a teacher or a staff member can nominate a kid that has demonstrated leadership in the month of June and they'll be recognized next Friday.
And, um, how does that work for like, the social emotional part? Like, do they get really excited for it or is it something that they just kind of?
Well, just definitely brings a heightened awareness around, like our, like our values, our safe, responsible, respectful, um, that was defined by the teachers and the students like a long time ago and we've, we've run with it. Do I think there's some opportunities to incorporate character traits and those kinds of things? Yes, so when we did our growth mindset book study, um, we talk a lot about perseverance at the Hood School, like that's like my favorite word and that's what we talk about especially like when there's challenges in front of the kids and, and those kinds of things. So I think it comes out a little different at each, at each school just because it's an organic development of that environment. So I definitely think I could, like performance characteristics and those kinds of things were things that we've talked about putting them in, but we haven't really gotten there yet. We still use open circle and a couple of, you know, the low grade levels and those kinds of things. You had that common language around like games and destructive behaviors and, and safe and all that stuff, so, I mean, there's different things going on in different places. I think it's an area where we, so the ultimate goal around that is everybody feels that they have a safe environment and it's just developed that way at each school.
Um, and just one last question, um, from different schools, do you do anything, um, to prepare like the fifth graders of the scary middle school, you know, that they have to go into? I, do you have talks with them? Is it, you know, anything of that nature?
Well, I, I mean, I can answer specifically for my school, um.
Well, we all, we all do the same thing.
Yeah, do we? Yeah, so I, I rotate across three classrooms, so we have a specialist, Mrs. Cleary is the specialist for science, Mr. Quinn is the specialist for math, and Mrs. Happen and Mrs. Lorton are the specialists for ELA and they rotate across the three. I, I love the idea of having a specialist because I feel like each time a teacher teaches a lesson, they can improve their practice all the way through it, but I also like the fact that the kiddos have to get their stuff, move all their stuff and go from place to place within the physical environment, um, and maneuver and have all their belongings. I think that's a nice first step, so.
We don't find the middle school to be very scary.
Yeah.
And the students have the opportunity, they come up here and take a tour of the school. Actually, all three come together, so they get to see their kids.
Just, just.
Same thing, and then they, I think it's the eighth graders, not sixth graders, take them around and take a tour and they have a chance to ask questions and the parents Then the parents have a information night that's already occurred. Um, and then on top of that, in August, they do the walkabouts. So the kids then come in and they're able to see their lockers. So the, the transition is actually probably more of excitement, um, as they finish, uh, elementary school. They get ready for middle school, and our students, by the time after six years in elementary school, they're, they're about ready for that change.
I, I mean, as far as I can recall, the, the only real scary thing for them through the whole process is the locker and the lock, right? Like, that's what they, they used to get most worked up about, so.
Can I ask a quick question? I know that Eureka Math has been rolled out at the Batch. Has that also been rolled out at the other two? So everybody's using Eureka Math fully at this point?
Yeah, so we're, we're blessed too because we have the, the leaders in that area.
Yeah.
And so there's a nice evenness across the schools with the implementation of it and the, the assessment of it, and this constant email communication across the buildings, making sure that people are on the same pages around that, and the delivery of that's the same. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're pretty impressed with how that's ruled out. I think the, the teacher buy-in was huge, so that helps that evenness across the buildings. Seems to be going well.
And it was really nice, and I think it was just last month, the district offered a elementary math curriculum night, and it was hosted at the Bachelor's School. But the nice thing was is they, I, I want to say with pretty high confidence that ninety percent of the grade levels were represented by a teacher from each school.
Yeah.
So the parents from each community had access to teachers in their school, teachers in other schools. They were hearing different tricks from different special educators on how to help them with homework or other resources or materials. Um, and those are the types of things that kind of help us stay consistent and challenge ourselves to learn from one another, um, to give the best to our students.
I think that's huge for the parents too, because one thing that you always hear, listening to the parents, is that they can't help their children in Eureka Math as much as they could if they were doing math sort of the old fashioned way, if you will. And so nights like that were huge because just the, the parents kind of came out and said, "It helps me help my children," which I think goes a, a long way because it's, it's new and novel for parents to wrap their head around. Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robster, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, so I, I have a, a number of comments and questions, so. Just wanted, I mean, I want to start by just saying, like, I love how, I love the elementary schools in this town, and I think it's funny because before I was on this committee, I sort of thought that every school would really be the same, especially in the same town, and it's nice to see how different they are. And I just see how one school pushes the other one, um, and, you know, one, one created Makerspace, and the other ones did this. And I, I, I love that about this community. I think that, you know, each school has its own, you know, i- its own ethos almost. And, you know, and you see it in the community, you see people buy into that where, you know, people that want, I know a lot of people that want to move, but they won't move out of the little school district, you know? They won't move out of the Batch, out of the Hood. And so I just think that's, should be noted that, you know, I think that it starts with the principals all the way through that, you know, everybody has their own identity, which I really think is great. Um, I, little note that I took down, I mean, the emergency operations plan, I know a lot of work was, have gone into that, so I like to see that people are really working on that because I think school safety is a big issue still right now. And so, again, even though it's, we think more about, about the high school and the middle school, I think. I mean, I think normally I would, but it's good to see even at the elementary level that it's being addressed. Um, one of my, one of my concerns, I guess, is, well, I guess I have a question first. Like, things like the Makerspace, is that, how is that funded? Is that funded through the PTOs entirely, or is it funded through o- other ways?
So it's interesting, so that initial startup was from our PTO, the Hood School. We haven't really put a lot of money into it from the regular school budget, and a lot of the stuff. I get milk cartons and egg cartons and all, I have a collection bin out in front of the school. So it's more like those kind of things. It's, it's not really a super huge expense when you can collect the items that they need. It's almost like you can't go out and buy cartons of egg, I mean, without the eggs. So to get those as the donations and have the kids work that kind of stuff, it is, is huge. But like, I added a 3D printer, and that was funded by the PA.
And I think we both started that same low-tech way. See, one, how it would fit, how much time people would use before you started looking at some of the larger, um, ticket items. Um, and then that's usually where the organizations would go. Um, I probably did a, put a lot of money into it, um, but like I said, mostly low, low-tech, high quantity things for kids to be able to explore. And the 3D printer, some of the technology, like an upgrade, like where a PC school with some iPads and Chromebooks, but we had to get a new iMac to be able to do some of the work with some of the other things like that for digital, um, movies and different things like that.
I, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I, where I'm going with that, I think just, one of my concerns, I mean, I'm always concerned about our budget and whether or not we can support it. I hate if we push onto the PTO thing that should be, you know, the school budget should be funding. Um, a- and I also worry a little bit, I mean, I, I know a lot of the, a lot of the people on the PTO, the Batch, at the Little. I don't know as many on the Hood. I think there's outstanding people there, but again, different, different schools sometimes is an inequality sometimes in just the funding. And so I just want to make sure that if we're pushing in particular curriculum things, because again, every time we go to a school, the Makerspace is presented, um, as kind of like one of the highlights. And I just want to make sure that we're always funding, um, what we need and that if, like, one, you know, one area of town is more affluent than another, that, you know, if there is a funding difference, or if it's ever impacting education, that it's brought up so that we can address things. And, and the other thing, the other way that came up was, in the Little, it was noted that the, there was no funding for the prep classes, for the, um, MCAS preparation. And that was a little concerning to me, that I just, I just, again, I understand that money only goes so far, but I hate to see in any presentation that something wasn't done because of a funding issue. And so, again, it's just a concern that I would watch going forward, that if there is something that's going to be cut because of funding, that, you know, that, I really hate to see anything cut because of that. Um, and the only other question I have, which unfortunately isn't for you two because Mrs. Molly's not here, but, um, the other thing that was a little bit concerning that was that there's no community member on the Little School PTO, um, or on the, uh, school council. Because I do think it's important to have some community involvement, and so that would be the only thing that I would point out, is that I think it'd be good to have a community member on all of the councils.
I know, I know Mr. Clean and I have both experienced the difficulties of actually recruiting them. Because I believe the criteria is a business person or there's some other language around it, but it has to be a person that, the business, or they do business, or they're a community member from that physical district's place. So when you talk about the high school and the middle school, you get the whole, you get the whole town. When you talk about one of us, we have to find somebody in our precinct, like, so. So it's definitely a challenge, and, I mean, I've been lucky in the sense that I had Starbucks and Stop &amp; Shop because that happened to be in, in, in my district. Um, and now I have a real estate agent from town who resides in my district, so that, that's my opportunity. And I know I've written letters in the transcripts.
Transcript.
And led it to the editor and those kind of things. It's not a very easy task sometimes, and sometimes you might get two or three people, but.
Yeah. No, I mean, overall, I mean, I think I, I love the elementary schools here. I think that, you know, I've met all, I've met all of you guys, I've been to, you know, different things, at different schools, and I just think everyone's doing a different but outstanding job overall, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, one more question. I don't know if this is really for Mr. McKay, Dr. McKay or not, but, um, the one thing at the Hood is there are so many different programs there. Like, they were, they were talking about the, I know the SEEM collaborative hosts a, a program there, and there's the, you know, the, the program for students with alternative learning dyslexia. And I guess my question is, is there any opportunity for North Reading to take over any of these programs? If we, because I know last year we really pushed to get a chairperson at the elementary level to work specifically at special education. I don't know if there's an opportunity for North Reading to do that and get tuition students there. I mean, how are those programs going? I think that's a unique thing at the Hood more than other schools.
So a few things, so SEEM's is, is a rental.
Correct.
And it's for deaf and hard of hearing students, they rent three classrooms and a couple other space. Um, I don't think that we as a district would have any students that would meet the criteria of eligibility for that program. Um, we do own the RISE programs as well as the language-based programs. So for our students with pragmatic social skills or autism spectrum disorders that are in our reaching independence through structured education classrooms, the, the, that's all us, like, those are our staff, our teachers, our funding and all that, as well as our language-based classroom, um, that's one physical space, so, and this, you know.
And there are programs in, at my school as well that are district-based programs, um, that you're always looking at building, sustaining, and then possibly, like you said, if you ever decide. I mean, I think that becomes the next policy part for probably for the school committee and looking at what tuitioning out means and what that work is, because we've done that in a while.
And, and that's a historical thing for us because at the Little School, she has three preschools.
Correct.
So everybody kind of had something at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept of the school improvement plans of the elementary.
So moved.
Second?
Second, I second.
Okay.
I thought, I thought he did.
It's, it's to accept the elementary school improvement plans.
So are we doing them all together?
Yes, yes.
For the three elementary schools only.
The E-Little, the Batch Elder, and the Hood. Yes, yes. All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for the binders.
I don't have to say four, four to zero, one missing type thing, nothing like that, okay. All right. Okay. All right, um, and would you like to do the, um, policy?
Yes.
To brief us how it seems to be.
So Rich, myself, and Mr. Bernard all met to discuss the changes to this policy. So this is for residency, so when new folks come to town to confirm residency. Um, there's not a lot of significant changes with the exception of really just doing, putting due diligence in place that was not there. So the first page, you'll only see the reviewed, um, date at the bottom. On the second page, under column A, and keep me honest here, Mr. Bernard, but the landlord affidavit was something that we just did not have, but has always been listed here. So that was a new add that you will see, I just wanted to highlight that on the second page. Um, you can keep flipping through until you get to, the pages aren't numbered, so I apologize.
Responsible.
Um, is really, so there's the reviewed comments at the bottom of the pages, but beyond that, you'll see one of the forms that has edits because it has a markup page. So if you keep flipping through, the responsible adult affidavit form has some edits. And it's really to, to add in, um, for those children that might, um, had shared living arrangements, really understanding, um, the predominant living arrangement, so whether they're residing at what location for nights a week. Um, so it really gives more detail there where detail was not originally within this form. Um, you'll see some other edits within number seven and number nine, just really making the, um, the statements a little bit more robust.
On, on number nine, is it supposed to be medical?
No, it's a typo, that's, I was just.
Yes, I did have, yeah, at the bottom. Um, it should be, um, at the very bottom, it should be medical and educational decisions for the child.
My, my only question on that one would be, all of these other things are just talking about residence, and then there's just one line in this affidavit about medical?
Mm-hmm.
And I just, I just, I might, I guess my question is, is this enough? Because I just worry that like, and again, I don't know much about divorce, and I don't know if like one person would have physical custody for edu- and the ability to make medical, uh, educational decisions versus a different parent might have medical decisions? And if that's been thought about, because it's just one line in here that says you have to both be able to make medical and educational decisions?
Mrs. Bellwell, do you mind me just adding here? So the, the, the edits here were all offered by the attorney.
Mm-hmm.
We, the, the committee, the sub-policy subcommittee, so I'm going to suggest that.
Okay.
Attorney and advocate, you know.
So he, he, he's reviewing it, it was his suggestion to do that.
He, he made the edits to this, and he also drafted the landlord affidavit form.
Especially the medical and educational combined, so it's either joint between both or resides with one. So they kind of go hand in hand, and that's probably what he was thinking. So that was the major changes was on this form. Um, and if you keep flipping, you'll see the, this new form that bridges that gap. So this is when, um, when they're unable to show additional documentation, um, they can complete this form, and I believe it has to be signed by a notary.
Correct.
Um, which will really make it a robust documentation of the, the residency for those situations in which this, this comes up.
Good job.
My only, my only other question slash concern about this, and I don't think the, I think the policy's great, and I don't know that we need to make any changes, but just if somebody ever puts down like the Poltehome as, which is going to be fifty-five-plus community, which shouldn't have students there, and if ever, anybody ever put that down as a residence, if there's anything we could do about it, um.
They can, they can have children living there.
Oh, you can't have children there?
Yeah, it just has to be one.
Right, it's age or.
One person has to be fifty-five or over that, uh, lives in the unit.
Oh, because when I, I asked a Realtor about it, and they, they had thought that you couldn't have children there.
No, you absolutely can.
Yeah, I, I believe that's the case.
That's what I was wondering.
All right, so.
Madam Chairman, if you don't mind, just as I get introduced, so I think what the policy subcommittee would like is a first reading on those two forms.
I was just.
The E refers to exhibit, so it's exhibit two, the edits to exhibit two, and then a first reading on exhibit three. Correct.
So can I combine them, or do I need to do exhibit B and then exhibit better?
I think I would suggest doing separate votes, yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
If I could have a motion to accept as first reading the North Reading Public Schools' responsible adult affidavit.
So, I'm confused here. We didn't do anything on JBCA at all, the policy?
Right.
Or JBCAR.
Just reviewed it.
But I thought you just said you added landlord affidavit to.
No, it was not, it was there, we were adding the form.
Okay.
The language was there, and there was no assistance of no form.
Okay, so the first two, then no changes or additions?
Correct.
Or the residency statement?
E2.
E2.
First reading.
For the first reading, yes.
The responsible adult affidavit form.
So I have a motion to accept at first reading for the JBCA E2.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
With, with the changes, with the correction of medical.
And I'll accept a motion to accept as first reading the North Reading Public Schools' landlord shared tenants' affidavit, which is JBCA E3.
So moved.
Thank you, any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next is the proposed school committee meeting scheduled for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen calendar year. Um, is there any dates that anyone needs to have changed, rearranged, moved?
I have a question, I mean, October ninth is listed there?
Yes.
As a Tuesday, is there a meeting that day too? What is that?
There, there is a meeting, it's just there does, there was no particular call out for that meeting.
Okay.
Monday is the Columbus Day holiday.
Okay. So that's, that's just a meeting in the DLO?
It's a regular meeting, right? You, you mean as if, why is there nothing in the column?
There was not, yeah, there was nothing, I just didn't.
Yeah, there's no particular.
Nothing to do.
Call out at this time.
Okay, and then, I mean, I might, again, I'm supposed to be coming, returning from Vancouver in September tenth, but I should be back for that, so I don't really know what next year's schedule too much, but I should be back.
Mill, are you all set with the dates?
Yeah, good.
Looks good.
All right. Um, no action needed, just the discussion, all right. Routine matters. We have, um, some executive minutes and open session minutes to approve. So if I could have a motion to accept the executive session of April thirtieth?
Move to exec- uh, accept the executive session of April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, as written.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions or discussion? All looks well?
Actually, we can only have three votes on this, so...
Yeah.
Because Diana wasn't on the committee yet, so she has to abstain. But three is okay, as long as three of us vote in favor.
I didn't see anything wrong with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Intertain a motion to accept the regular meeting of the school committee on, on April thirtieth?
Move to accept the open meeting minutes for the regular meeting of the school committee, April thirtieth, 2018, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to accept the executive session of May seventh.
Move to accept, May seventh, executive session minutes, as written.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And lastly, the open session of the regular school committee meeting on May seventh.
Move to accept, May seventh, 2018, open session minutes, as written.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We don't have a budget update at this time?
That's correct.
So we're good? And do we have any staffing?
Madam Chairman, we do. We've been, we've been doing some hiring across the district. Excuse me. There we go. For the next school year for 2018-19. So I thought I would update you tonight on, on a number of new staff that have been hired to date. I anticipate I'll be doing this, if not at the June twenty-fifth meeting, certainly in the summer meetings. So I am pleased to inform you and the community that we have hired Stephanie Crossden to replace Sandy Romanowitz as the secretary at the Batch Elder School. At the middle school, we have hired Heather Maiola, who has been a longtime Title I tutor in the district. She will be a permanent math teacher. And we've also hired, we had a fortunate situation this year with two long-term substitute teachers that were in for the full year, and we have offered them a permanent position, Jessica Murdock and Catherine Gray, both English Language Arts. At the high school, we have hired a Ms. Camille Curtis as a special education teacher. Ben Owens will serve as a shared teacher at the middle high school. He's going to teach music at the middle school, and he will be the new band director, replacing Eric Forman, Ben Owens is his name. We've hired Caitlin O'Donnell as a school psychologist, the new position that was funded in the fiscal year nineteen budget. A digital learning specialist in, for the district, replacing Joanne Coughlin, who's retired, is James Segroy. And the new elementary team chairperson for special education, new position in this year's budget, has gone to an inside candidate, a teacher, a special education teacher at the Batch Elder School, Rachel Anastasia. So that will be a, kind of a trickle-down opening at the Batch Elder School that we will be looking to fill. So, so that's one, four, seven, nine, nine positions filled to date. We still have a number to go, some, you know, some retirements to be filled. We've had a number of resignations in the paraprofessional world, people moving on, which is not unusual. I don't think it's anything that I, is untypical from what I've experienced so far, but it's, you know, it's going to look like a longer list of people, I think, as the summer unfolds, but it's really, it's not additional positions beyond what you, you folks already know as having been funded in the budget. So welcome to those, to those folks.
Thank you. Onto bids and donations. Are you going to be the...
I guess I'll do it tonight.
You don't have to.
I'll do it.
Okay.
But we'll have to, we have to groom somebody else. I move to accept with gratitude a donation of fifty dollars from Kathleen Apidian. It's a scholarship donation for a class of 2018 graduating senior.
I'm getting asked a second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, Cindy prefers when we all...
I'll, I'll keep going.
I move to accept a donation of a hundred and twenty-seven dollars from Mary and Richard Lazin, except with gratitude, that is, and this is a donation for the North Reading High School track team.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-nine cents from donorschoose.org, and this is for smart technology speakers for Jana Kamose, music class at Hood Elementary School. And I believe donorschoose.org is a site where teachers and others can put up their requests and they get funded. It's almost kind of like a GoFundMe for education, correct?
Yeah. It is one of the sites we, we have authorized.
Right.
Once the principals approve the project.
Yes, so principals have to approve all projects, we feel, okay?
Before it gets posted.
So I move to accept that donation.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. There's no subcommittee updates at this time. However, then the schedule would be for the athletics subcommittee tomorrow, June twelfth, at twelve-thirty PM at the superintendent's conference room. The NORCAM Board of Directors on June twenty-eighth at six PM.
That's actually been moved to June twenty-first.
Thank you for the projection.
I think you did, yeah.
June twenty-first at six PM in the NORCAM office.
Everybody asked.
John, do you have an administrative report?
Madam Chairman, I do not. I do not have an administrative report this evening.
All right. In correspondence, there is a letter from Danielle Masterson, the head of the Youth Services at the Flint Memorial Library.
Do you want to speak to that? So, yeah, you know, Danielle Masterson is, if you don't know her, is a very, very nice person, has really done a lot in integrating her work at the public library with our students of the district and teachers. She participated in parent university with our middle high school library, excuse me, our high school library media specialist, and also a library media paraprofessional, Diane McGuire from the Hood School, excuse me, from the Little School. Just has really, I think, you know, done a nice job of trying to tie the two organizations together, the, the public library and the schools' library services for students. And so one of our special education programs, the Transition Academy, that is housed here at the high school, has as part of its program, an externship program for the students. And so the students are integrating out into the community in various, various ways. They do some, some work at the Marshalls located out on Route twenty-eight. They also do work at the food pantry, and they've been doing some work, as Danielle outlines, at the public library. And it's been a very, they've all been very, very nice partnerships, I think very beneficial to the, to the students, but quite honestly, I think the people that host them end up in the end finding out that they get more out of the, the experience, I think, than they anticipated, the adults working with them. It's really, it's, it's a very special thing to see. And so I thought it was nice that Danielle took the time to send all of you a letter just acknowledging the students and the teachers, and Gail Tallis and Kim Spina are two paraprofessionals in the, in the Transition Academy program, but then their teachers, Judy Carter, Mark Wardley, and Jonathan Hudson have really done an exceptional job, I think, with this program and, and, and teaching the students some very valuable life skills as part of their, as part of their externship at the, at the Flint Memorial Library. So I thought, I thought the letter would be something that, you know, you would want to, you would want to see, so...
Very nice. Yeah, that's great. I didn't realize they did that.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been pretty spec, it's, it's a pretty neat thing they do, quite honestly. You know, we've had, we've had students, there were, students participated in graduation on Friday, which was, you know, that have, have moved through the, the Transition Academy program now. It's, it's very nice to see. And, you know, again, as we talk many times, and usually in our budget deliberations, your budget deliberations, we talk about the value of students being educated in their home schools. And I think this program particularly is an example where I think the benefits of us being able to offer a quality program to, to students with special needs in district, in our, in our schools is, 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 is a, is a good example of, of the work that's getting, that's going on and getting done, so...
Great.
So, with informational purposes.
Thank you. All right. For future business, our next meeting is June twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM here at the Digital Learning Lab. Then July nineteenth, which is a Thursday, we have a goal-setting workshop at four-thirty PM in the superintendent's conference room, and then a, a regular meeting here at six-thirty